Okay, everybody. Good evening. It is Monday, September 13th, and this is the town of Rhinebeck regular town board meeting. I think we're gonna go slightly out of order tonight, and we had a couple of late-
You have to do the pledge?
Who said that?
Josh.
Gosh.
Uh, we don't have to, but we can, yes.
Let's-
But everybody like to join for the pledge? I forgot.
I know. Congratulations. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. A nation. Invisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, first, we have a presentation tonight from Nate Nardi Saris from New York State DEC and Mark Dixon, the chair of our Conservation Advisory Board. They've been working really diligently on this Hudson River Estuary Program, and they're going to give us a brief overview of their natural resource inventory. So, thanks Nate for coming. Mark, thanks for coming. Nate, it's all you.
I'll just give a quick introduction. He owns with the DEC Conserva- he's a Conservation and Land Use Specialist, and he's been working very hard with us, and he's been instrumental in helping us with this NRI.
Thanks.
But I'll turn it over now to Nate.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for that introduction. Thank you to you all.
Thanks for coming.
Glad to hear-
Thanks for doing this. Yeah, it's been great seeing all the progress, and you've- thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Well, this is, uh, this is what we do at the Estuary Program, so I'm always happy to help. Um, but yeah, then let me just get into it. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but we have a lot of exciting progress to talk about. In case you need a little refresher and know, this NRI project is being our program. The Conservation and Land Use Team at the Hudson River Estuary Program is helping to coordinate this NRI project by bringing in Cornell Cooperative Extension of Dutchess County, and they're bringing their mapping expertise to this project. We are bringing our coordination. Our program wrote, actually, a guidebook on creating natural resources inventories. So we have a lot of experience doing this, and we like to bring that to our local communities. And then, of course, all of the village volunteers, I mean, the town and the village volunteers. This is actually an intermunicipal project, so we're working with not only members of the Environmental Committee for the Village of Rhinebeck, but also volunteers from the Town of Hyde Park, which include both CAC members and Planning Board members, as well as a couple other interesting, interested folks. So, you know, it's a big group in addition to the Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board or Conservation Board, but we're all working together, and we're making great progress, so I'm happy to share that with you. Uh, I'm gonna make this quick. I know we don't have a whole lot of time, but I'm gonna just give you a little refresher on what a natural resources inventory is. I'll talk about some of our project goals, a little bit of a timeline as to, you know, where we've come from, what we've accomplished, and when we're looking to finish up. We'll definitely get an opportunity to look at some maps and then talk a little bit about how your community might put one of these inventories to work. So this is just a basic planning approach that our program likes to espouse when we talk to communities. I don't want to talk too much about our program, but basically what we do at the Estuary Program is provide education and technical assistance primarily to municipalities, but also land trusts, in helping in planning for conservation. So, in that work, we've developed this really simple sort of framework, starting with an inventory. You could use that kind of fundamental inventory knowledge to set your priorities for a community and then ultimately plan, protect, and manage the natural resources that you have. But this whole process kind of revolves around this step of inventory, which is really critical and ends up being the springboard for a lot of other exciting things. So, a natural resources inventory really is just a combination of all of the known resources for community, all of the known information on natural resources, bringing that into a single place. So instead of having, you know, a report here on aquifers and a report here on habitats, we're taking all of that information and we're putting it into one single document. And so that could be really useful for Planning Board, Town Board. It can serve as kind of the fundamental planning document that the entire community can reference as kind of a common set of facts. And so, what that ends up looking like in practice is a series of maps, usually around 20 to 50 or so, and they have with, with and without parcels. So, you know, those with parcels can obviously be very useful on site level planning, and those without tend to be more useful at townwide planning. And then there's a written description for each of those. So, the maps are really informative, and they're very exciting to look at, but without some kind of written description, it's very difficult to interpret what's going on or, you know, what some of the priority areas might be. And so, it's really critical to have that report component. It also acts as a place to kind of store those other reports I was talking about, say, an aquifer study, or in the case of the town of Rhinebeck, your Hudsonia Habitat map. So it acts as a home for all of those materials. So the goal of this project was to, you know, cultivate stewardship of resources, you know? So, again, this is the foundation of subsequent planning and stewardship. So it also informs design and review of new development, and again, is the foundation for plans and policies. So something like a comprehensive plan, which may be, you know, something that a town board might be considering. This can be really useful for that, and I'll talk about that a little bit more at the end of the presentation. Okay, so our timeline, in March 2021, the town passed, your board passed a resolution that allowed the Conservation Board to work with our program in Dutchess CCE. So that's, we kicked off the project in May, and then during the summer, we spent scoping what this project was gonna look like, what were the goals, how many maps, what data are gonna be shown, and then we started that draft mapping process. And now we're kind of getting into winter, or fall, rather. I don't want to get ahead of myself. But then, at this point, you know, we have kind of a solid set of maps already, and at this point, we want to get revisions, get input, first internally, kind of through town boards, but then ultimately from the public. And once those maps are kind of cemented and we have all that, you know, really squared away, we're gonna spend next spring into summer bringing that information together. So really working on that narrative, which, at the end of the day, including maps, we're talking about a hundred-page report somewhere in that ballpark. And so, again, we're hoping to, by summer 2022, have a draft copy to circulate to your board and the general public for comment. Okay, so to the maps, which are the exciting part, this is the deliverable, right? We haven't finished the narrative yet, but we do have these wonderful maps. And so I'm gonna go over a few examples and talk a little bit about them just to maybe pique your interest and hopefully to get you to look at the wider set of maps that are now available. Okay, so the first, we have these like set up by categories, and let me go back really quick. So, you know, we have a section on climate, physical setting, so that's things like geology and topography, water resources, which include things like aquifers and stream resources, habitats and wildlife, and a lot of this is planning data that revolves around rare species. But in the case of Rhinebeck, you have a lot of unique information. And then land use, that's things like kind of remotely sensed land cover for the town, agricultural resources, those type of things. And so, as I get into each of these sections, the map, the maps themselves are kind of in flux right now. We have sort of an outline target of which maps, but those are still kind of being refined at this point. But for this purposes, I displayed the Climate Resilience Map. This is a really interesting dataset from the Nature Conservancy, and it's a little complicated, but the takeaway here is that the darker these green color, those are the habitats, the areas, the natural areas that are expected to maintain high levels of diversity in plant and animal communities in a changing climate. So for a variety of factors, these areas are expected to host new species migrating from the south and to retain species that are currently living on the site. So it gives you some ideas. I see like Fern Cliff Forest is an area that's considered to be kind of a hotspot, and then the area around kind of Fallsburg Creek here and Landsman's Kill is also identified there. So this is just one dataset to help kind of prioritize planning for a future climate. Next, we have the physical setting maps, and of course, that includes some of your geology maps, steep slopes, and topography and elevation. And steep slopes, I have that here. That can be really useful for especially the Planning Board when they're looking at site plans. This is pretty high-resolution data that would give them an idea of if there are slopes that are in excess of 25% or there's even a, there's a full ramp here, so everything from 5% to 25%. And of course, you can zoom in on these maps, and at the parcel level, that information's a lot more clear. But from the town level, you can see kind of the areas along the Hudson, those clay ravines that kind of go up here through the Landsman's Kill, and then some of the higher elevation areas in town. Uh, next, this is some water resources maps, and this is a, I pulled out the aquifers map here. This is pretty unique data from Dutchess County. I believe that county planning worked with Cooperative Extension to put this together in the early 90s, but it shows areas for aquifer recharge that are important, the major and sensitive aquifers in the town. And I will say that I've worked in other communities, notably Beekman, which is a little bit, you know, to your southeast, and they actually use this as the foundation for their aquifer protection law, this dataset. So these datasets can be used to do something like an overlay district, which may be of interest during a future zoning update. This is an interesting map I included here for habitats and wildlife. And again, I'm not, I'm not talking about all these maps down here, but this is all, these are all separate maps with separate resources shown on them. This is important biodiversity areas, so these are areas that, basically, if you go on the Environmental Resource Mapper, if you have a project, which is the DEC screening tool, if there's a rare species, there'll be a circle that's placed around that at a buffer, let's say, you know, a thousand feet or so. In this case, you'll notice that the boundaries are not necessarily a circle, and that's because they have a known rare species location, they put it into this computer model, and it basically took all the known habitat that that species would require and drew a smart boundary. So instead of just saying, you know, "A thousand feet away from this location, we expect it could be here", we say, you know, "A rare frog was found in this wetland", and it's connected to all these other wetlands that it could be using, but it doesn't include the more urbanized area or the more suburban area where there's no habitat. So it's a little bit more of a kind of targeted way of looking at where rare species are, and it breaks them out by, you know, whether or not they're an important area for terrestrial species, something like a land turtle, or rare species, something like maybe a frog or a rare bird. So it gives you some information in that category. And then last, we have land use here. This is an agricultural resources map, so it shows kind of the important farmland soils in the town, because of course, Rhinebeck has a rich history in farming. It also shows parcels that are receiving the county ag value assessment. So it's kind of a proxy for active farm use in the town. And again, it's a little easier to see when you have that map in front of you, but you can see these kind of hash lines there. It gives you an idea of where the major important agricultural centers are in the town, and maybe some areas that could be conserved or protected or considered that maybe don't have agriculture now, but have really important soils that do support it. Okay, so I'm gonna end this presentation with a look at what might come down the road after this natural resources inventory is complete. And here, this is that example, getting back to comprehensive planning and zoning updates. This is a great resource for, for a town that's looking to take on a project like this. So the example I have here, this is the town of Cornwall, well, the village is Cornwall and Hudson, but the town is Cornwall, and they did a comprehensive plan update in 2019, and they were concurrently working on their natural resources inventory, and they were actually able to use maps from their natural resources inventory in the comp plan. And I believe that was able to realize some cost reduction on that part because their comprehensive plan consult and didn't have to do quite as much mapping. Things like, again, going back to aquifers, but it's an important resource. They might map something like that in a comp plan update, but if the information's already there, you're a step ahead. This is a map that they had included that was public wells, aquifers, and risk sites. Now went right into the plan. Uh, next, we have just general planning for conservation, things like open space plans, which are, you know, basically the town's step-by-step plan for conserving land in their town, an open space inventory, which is a prioritization of parcels, or a community preservation plan. And that's something that the town of Red Hook, to the north of you, adopted some years ago, where they, they received authorization from the state government to hold a referendum that ultimately got them a real estate transfer tax. I don't remember what theirs is. It's between 1 and 2% on all transactions, and that's funded a lot of conservation in the town.
I think it's 2%-
It is 2%.
-over the median sales price. So whatever the median sales price is, is exempt, so it's anything over than that.
Yep, that's, you got it. So you're obviously very well aware of the community preservation plan. But again, we've had other communities that we've worked with on these that have used their natural resources inventories to create a plan like this.
When did Red Hook pass that? About 10 years ago?
Yeah, they had, they had already had a bond measure, so there had been some planning done in how they were gonna spend that bond measure prior to the passing of the community preservation plan, or fund, rather, and I don't really remember, but I think you're on, I think it was something like 2009, I want to say, when that was first passed.
Thank you.
And this is just a really cool open space plan map. This is from the city of Kingston, and they had completed a natural resources inventory that ultimately led to this, and it's just a really great way to, you know, get the community excited about conservation when you have a really dynamic kind of action-based map like this. So if you are interested in open space planning, I encourage you to look at the city of Kingston's. Because surprisingly, they do have quite a bit of resources, natural resources, even though they are technically a city. Okay, the next example is developing checklists. So I have this checklist here, but this is something that's great for planning boards, but other committees who have to do some kind of environmental review, or really any kind of review. Everyone realizes the value of a checklist, but if that is something that you do want to develop, the natural resources inventory is an obvious starting point. If you can look at all the data that's there, then any board that requires an applicant to provide information can just provide the applicant with that checklist and the natural resources inventory. This was one from some years ago that your planning board was using. I don't really know what the status of that is at this point, but again, it's a great model for, for using that NRI and planning going forward. And then finally, there's stewardship. This is especially pertinent for municipalities that manage, that manage their own parkland that has significant natural resources in it. And it really, the natural resource inventory can help define what resources might be on those properties, and in that way, it can help enhance the management because it can focus management on protecting those critical areas. So the example I have here, this is from a project we were working with the town of Uniondale, which you can see Beekman is just to the south of it, and this is their town park. It's Timor Park. They're very proud of it. It's about 2,000 acres or so, and so, you know, they have just finished their natural resources inventory and have started using it to help prioritize management within their park. So here, you can see this is a land use map. It just tells you these yellow areas are their field areas, and green is forest, and it kind of breaks out what's conifer forest and what's deciduous forest there. This is another interesting piece of data. It's the Forest Condition Index. I won't get into what that actually is, but it is a ranking and prioritization of forests throughout the region. And so it helps them to see that this forest up here is of much greater value at the regional scale than this one down here, and they're both within the parks. They really want to concentrate kind of restoration activity and keeping trails away from sensitive areas in this northern part of the park because of this. And then this is another map looking at floodplains and riparian areas, kind of the smaller floodplains around streams. This is a dam here that's slated for removal, so it gives them an idea of, you know, maybe some, they might want to do some dam removals to help migratory fish get above them, or maybe they just want to do some planning and preparation for a trail or road building that has to cross some of these floodplains, so you can find the easiest way to do that. And then finally, this is that steep slopes map, and it just tells you, you know, where the steepest areas are and places that are potentially sensitive to environmental degradation because of that. So again, this is the kind of analysis that, you know, a planning board would do for any parcel, but it can also be useful for the town in their stewardship and management of their own properties. And that's, that's all I had. I tried to run through that as fast as I can because I know that you have a busy agenda today, but I do encourage you to visit the Rhinebeck Project website that I have here, and Mark can circulate that link to you all again. And that, you know, look at the maps that are there. If you have any questions or comments, please reach out to Mark and, you know, send them our way. We're really interested in, you know, getting your feedback and having as many eyes on these maps before we get them to publication.
Nate, it was a great presentation. We can, you know, send this link out in our, in our web email blasts and put it on our website. If you, you know, get it to the clerks, we'll take care of that.
That sounds great. Mark, do you know, are the, are the current maps that Sean has up there?
So far, we just have the base map. I don't think I have the updated other resource maps you gave me.
Okay, well, what we'll do is we'll send those back to Sean. We'll make sure we get kind of a finalized set that we want to distribute to the public, and then maybe we'll circulate that to the clerk to-
Coordinate with, coordinate with, you know, Mark and I and the clerks, and we'll, we'll get it out in any way that we're able to, because this is wonderful information. You know, we passed our comprehensive plan and updated zoning, I guess, almost 12, 13 years ago, and we're constantly looking at things, and this will be really invaluable for us. So thank you all for doing it.
Great. Yeah, thank you all. I'm gonna take off now. Good luck on the rest of your-
Thank you.
-board proceedings.
Okay, goodbye. Okey-dokey. I'm probably guessing that a lot of people are here for this Brian Tam's presentation, so should we do that next?
Sure.
Yeah. Brian, Rebecca?
Let me just share our screen with you. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
In here, it references a petition, but I don't think we've received anything from you.
We can certainly send that to you.
That would be, yeah, that would be terrific, just to the clerks and town board.
Sure.
Not, not just, just so it's a, we have it on record, not-
Of course.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. I mean, we, we can email it right now.
Yeah, well, um, part of it is a online petition, but we also have a scan of physical signatures as well, because they're worth repetition circulating at the same time.
Whoa.
Yeah. Two were started by local children, so it's really great seeing them getting involved in the community, having that kind of engagement and taking that initiative, so that was really nice to see. But, yeah, that's most of what the physical signatures are.
Great.
So, yeah, it's just, it's been the-
Do you guys want to put your video on or?
Oh, sure. We can do that.
Yeah.
I think.
On the bottom, towards the left of your screen.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't know if you can stream a video inside of a video stream.
Let's see.
Oh, I see. Well, wait.
Is this a wormhole, Fred?
Nate was doing it.
Top, you can see a video.
Nate did it.
Oh, no, I feel like this is a pop.
Okay, don't worry about it. Don't stress. Let's just go through your presentation.
There you go.
Whoa.
Did that work?
Yeah, you were there.
And now I'm gone. We're off to a great start here.
Don't worry about it, Rebecca. I don't mean to stress you out.
Yeah, I don't know how to do it now that we-
Okay, that's all right. Let's just look at your presentation.
Okay.
Well, my wife really helped put this together, and she's much better at speaking to groups. Is it okay if she, she kind of goes through this?
Absolutely.
Whoever you want. Yep.
Okay.
Together, alone, whatever.
Uh, we really appreciate you guys taking the time to review this proposal we sent over. There's really been a lot of community interest, it seems, in having this skate park added to our community. Skateboarding's been around since the early 1900s, but there's been a real recent growth in popularity, and with the debut at the Olympics, there's been huge growth locally, as well as obviously all over the world. But locally especially, we're seeing a lot of people of all ages, kids, adults, taking on that sport and not really having a place for them to practice, a place for them to hone their skills, a place for them to enjoy the sport safely. It's, you know, all sports come with, you know, some kind of inherent risk, baseball, soccer, football, all of it. Skateboarding, typically, the most serious injuries are involving a vehicle and are on the road. So providing this space for skateboarders to practice in a safe area away from traffic is, is really something that it seems the community has been looking for. It's not new. This has kind of been discussed, I think, for the last at least 10 years. But even having, you know, been born and raised here, my husband as well, you know, we've been talking about skate parks in this town since we were in school.
Where's the nearest skate park, Rebecca?
Um, there is one in Red Hook. They have a skate park set up. There's also one in Hyde Park.
Yeah.
And then across the river, Kingston is attempting to get skateboard, skate park added, and Sargertes has a concrete skate park.
The Kipsey Alston.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we kind of went through and looked at what some of the different options were for the skate park. What we sent over, first of all, was a proposal of where it could be located. There's a space between the tennis courts and the baseball field at the Maserela Rec Park.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Is this, is this what is identified on our master plan?
No.
No, it's not. It's not. It's the area identified the master plan is south of this.
So why would we, why would we move it?
Because it's cheaper.
This is, this is utilizing that blacktop space that's just has some dirt on it and some broken docks.
Okay, um, you know, I just asked because I think we would have to go through a site plan review and special use.
Yeah, that, that's one of the asks here is what the actual process for approval is because-
Yeah.
We were just talking about how, you know, how you guys are, everyone's putting the new fences up, like just trying to make the place look better, and there's this, you know, messy spot that could be turned into something easily-
Right.
-and fairly inexpensively.
How would it inter, or how would it interact with baseball games when they were going on?
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a separate area. It would be fenced, most likely.
But this area is used by the, the baseball people when they're doing baseball.
How is it?
No.
I don't-
Well, we're on Little League.
Brian, would you mind if I comment on that? Would you mind if I comment on that? Can we wait until the end of the, sure, go ahead.
I was just gonna answer it as a baseball family who plays on that field often.
Oh, great. Um, I'm sorry, who's speak, who's speaking?
My name is Lara Pendergast.
Hi, Lara. Thanks for coming.
Hi. Um, I just wanted to say to you, as someone who's always there watching the game right from that section, that behind that area that's in the view right now is never used, ever. And interestingly enough, if you look at the Red Hook Skate Park, it's actually right off of their baseball field as well. There never seems to be any issue with it conflicting with the games. You know, this little area now, it's not used at all.
Okay, well, I mean, it's just, you know, we, just, it's just a question. It's something we just, I was just wondering.
Yeah, I just figured I'd let you know, since they use the field all the time. It's, I don't see it being any sort of a distraction.
Thank you.
Bleachers then aren't used?
The bleachers are used, but you know, you're looking at a pretty large- The bleachers are used, but you know, you're looking at a pretty large section there. I know the Red Hook Skate Park, if it's that wide, I would be surprised. I don't think that there would be an issue with having the skate park fit there and still keeping the bleachers. Maybe I'm.
I mean, the bleachers could move on to the grass, just like on the other side. They're, they're much closer.
Yeah, you would probably be better off having them on the grass, actually, because then that, um, you know, the announcer and the dugout won't be so much in your pat, in your view path.
Keep going, Brian.
Um, well, I mean, there was a, the, when I joined the park committee, we, you know, we were looking at the space, uh, which is proposed in the original plan from however many years ago. And which would be great and, and there is the ability to do a large concrete park there. But, you know, just looking at the park and just saying immediately, oh, we could make this place look so much better and be used. That was kind of my, my take on using that blacktop area.
Got it.
So we were able to get just a, a quick design from a ramp company that actually constructed the Red Hook Park, I believe. Um, and this is, is something they prepared for us. What we would be, be able to do with a modular system. The great thing about the modular system is that if you were to decide at any point, hey, this is really being utilized. It's a huge asset for our community. We'd like to put a concrete park in. The modular part can be utilized. It would not become obsolete. It would just become a part of that concrete.
Yeah, it could be moved.
It would become a part of the infrastructure of a concrete park?
Yeah, it can be.
Wow. What, what are these topped with or faced with?
Steel.
These are made of steel. There are some different options about what they can be topped with. This is a, a paint, I believe they use some, a type of coating called Max, Max Titan. They also have something called steel armor, um, which. Ramp armor, which, which costs a bit more. Um, the initial estimate we got was for the base steel with just the coating.
Which does have a twenty year warranty.
Yeah, so talking in to the different municipalities that have installed these skate parks, that overwhelmingly, the feedback has been they require little to no maintenance. There really isn't a lot involved in upkeep, you know, obviously, you know, cleaning, some touch up paint. Um, but overwhelmingly, there really is no maintenance to these parks.
And Rebecca, these units all work as a sort of path, like you go clockwise or counterclockwise?
Sure. This over here you can see is a half pipe. So you can use any one of these pieces, you know, a kid could just practice on one of these ramps at a time.
But they interact with each other.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the one thing that a skate park company will design is try to make a flow. So when you're riding from one side, you go over, you know, and.
Yeah, while creating still a flow of traffic, let's say, um, so that it's not overly crowded and, and multiple people can utilize it at the same time.
Okay, I'm sorry, I ask questions as I think of them. Um, the, the surface that's there, it's kind of like an item four or like a gravelly thing, right?
No, it's, it's, it's macadam. It's.
Would we need to, um, concrete that?
Um, I mean, that would be great, but it, it's not needed. Hyde Park has a modular park, very similar to this, uh, on blacktop. Um, and it's nice and it hasn't, it's been there for twenty years. And I was talking to the, the park director over there and they've only had to replace two little things in twenty years.
So we could have it resurfaced. We would have it resurfaced before we put this.
Yeah, I, I was thinking, you know, either the possibility of having it do a seal coating. Or the, uh, it could be coated like the tennis courts with that tenant with the sport coating.
The main requirement is that it's substantially level. Um, making sure that it's not overly wavy because that can cause problems with the installation of the ramps.
But they have to meet the ground.
Yeah, it has to be assessed because is the scope might not just be putting these things in. We might have to seal coat or level a bit or something, but we hope it's a stable foundation to put this stuff on.
Because surprisingly, that blacktop has been there for, I, I don't even remember. It's just been there for years. And there's really only one major crack in it, which is surprising. And I wouldn't even call it major, really. It's just a small crack in the.
Whoever did it did a great job.
Yeah.
Um, so this is the initial estimate. Again, this is just for this particular setup.
Which is based on the size of that blacktop.
Right, so it's based on the, the existing size that, 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 you know, we could make that work. This includes prevailing wage, so the price already includes that. It includes installation. I believe it does not include fencing. That would have to be performed or installed separately. That's not something the American Ramp Company does, but just to give us an idea of what this park would cost us. Um, again, depending on what has to be done to the pad, um, to make it suitable for installation of the ramps and then, you know, additional fencing around it as well. And we also, um, we talked a little bit about the maintenance schedule, of course, already. You know, weekly, it's really just inspecting the surfaces for foreign objects, brushing, you know, leaves and acorns off, whatever might be on there. Uh, monthly inspecting the hardware and quarterly touching up paint if necessary, but we're being told that really doesn't happen often.
Great.
So just to give you an idea of what some of these parks look like, American Ramp Company was able to send us a few projects. Uh, this one is in Los Angeles, California. Again, you can see these are the modular ramps they've installed. There's some rails.
Is this fenced and locked or is it open all night long or?
Well, I, I did talk to everyone else. The authorities put up, um, fencing to try and keep people on bikes off of it. Um, because they, they had specifically made it for skateboarding.
Sure, sure. And is that what we want to do? We want it to be for skateboarding, not bikes and.
I, I think with bikes, you have to have very large ramps, you know?
It would probably be better suited just kept to skateboarding, possibly.
Yeah.
Rollerblading.
Yeah, rollerblades and stuff like that.
Are you envisioning lighting as well?
Well, there, there is, there is lighting there. There is a giant, uh, double-headed thing pointing right at that, right on.
Is that sufficient for the area?
I don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the park is closed after dusk.
Yeah, the, the, after, there's no consideration at this point in my view about nighttime stuff.
Okay.
Um, and, and Hyde Park, they do have theirs fenced in. I asked if they did it a necessity and they just said, oh, we just did it because, you know, in case we needed to lock it. And they said they all have only locked it a couple of times in, in twenty years.
Yeah.
And they haven't had any vandalism, like real, you know, they've had people, you know, painting and writing on stuff. But there's been no, no damage done, which is pretty cool.
And their, their skate park is kind of tucked away, um, kind of away from the rest of the park, where this would be kind of integrated with the rest of the park. So I don't think there's much, as much of a concern about that.
What is the gray structure at the left end of this?
Here? Uh, it looks like that could possibly be concrete.
Yeah.
Wouldn't skateboard onto it, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, all of these would be, you know, although there is a lip there, so I'm not really. Yeah. Um, this one was in New Jersey, obviously much bigger in size, but just to give you an idea of what these modular ramps look like. And then the last photo, this is kind of where they've integrated these modular ramps into a concrete park. Um, so it's something that can be done after the fact, uh, and you just install it into the concrete. So I think, um, there has been a lot of support from the community, both from children, adults, locals, visitors. There's opportunities to add on to this park. It is modular, so it can be moved around. Um, you know, there's additional pump track, um, modular pump tracks you could put on for, for bikes. There's concrete. There's a lot of different options for down there. We're really just looking for some, you know, support and possibly to be included in the upcoming budget and find out from you what you need from us in order to be able to provide that support, what the next steps are.
Well, I think, um, this is an excellent, uh, presentation. I know that, you know, it's in our master plan and we've been wanting to do it for a long time. We're entering into our budget session and we are prepared to put money into this for funding. You know, we've also got a big ask for the fields and we've got to redo some of the parking places. But we're ready to invest money into the park infrastructure. Um, we have to work on this as a, um, board, but I do the tentative budget and present it to the board and then it becomes their budget. So I don't know, maybe we could have a brief meeting, you, Josh, and I, while I prepare this part of the budget. Um, I had thought that the ask was about sixty or seventy thousand, which I, I was pretty sure we could do. I don't think we want to bond. So I don't, I don't know. I don't know if we could do a hundred and twenty all this year, but we should.
Possibly to, to do fundraising in conjunction with it?
Not, not us, um, the town.
No, absolutely. Just, it just prolongs it to some degree, so.
Yeah.
Are the six hundred signatures all Rhinebeckians and all children or a mix of adults?
No.
It's a mix.
It's a mix.
I, I did, uh, I was able to go through the, the online ones and take out any, any, you know, on, on not real, not real names and any doubles and stuff like that. Um, majority are from, the, the online ones only let you select, oh, no, no, it does say where they're from. Um, most are Rhinebeck, but there is a local, you know.
We're, we're going to get to the official thing.
Yeah, and the fig, the, the, yesterday alone was eighty signatures by, uh, Nabeel Jabari, who, uh, went just around town all day and got, and got people to sign, which is really impressive.
You know, we're, as I said, ready to invest into the infrastructure of the park. On our radar is, you know, redoing the pool and that whole pool area, getting the soccer field in, getting this in. Um, and we really have to see where we are and what we do and how we do it. I don't know, we can't do everything in one year.
Yeah.
We can certainly start and open a capital project. And this is a decision that the board has to make together.
Sure.
But we, but I would like to meet with you during my phase of the tentative budget preparation, just to sit down and, and, and tell you. And I, you know, I have a schedule for the board, which I have to go over of, of when I think I'll have the budget ready and when it has to be delivered. So within the next week, ten days, we should sit down and, and come up with a, with, with a figure.
Okay.
So I have a question. Has anybody looked at the possibility of grants from the county or some of the local funds that have been, that are around? When we built the pavilion, the town, I don't think funded more than a third of the cost. The rest of it came from grants.
Well, we got a block, community block grant, grant, but we don't meet the, um, because it was handicap accessible, but we don't meet the income threshold for that.
I believe Molinaro is doing a recreation playground grant. Um, has anybody heard of that one?
No.
I could look into that, Brian and Rebecca, if you'd like. I know that he does several, he does several each year.
Well, this is like something we can look at as we're funding it. And the town, we will put some money towards this, whether it's a hundred and twenty thousand this year. I don't know, but it could be within two years.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks you all so much.
No, this looks beautiful and it would be good for the kids. I know it's been on the wish list for a long time. So, um, Rebecca and we, we'll, you know, we'll set up a date to go over this so we know what we're targeting for the budget. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, great.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all of your enthusiasm and thank you everybody for coming and supporting this. You know, uh, uh, one thing I want to speak to is just the process. Because this park is on our master plan in another place, we really have to talk to, um, Melody Moore, our, our planning board chair, uh, and find out what the process is for moving it and whether that's a wa- whether, oh, yeah, if we can.
I, I'll talk to Melody. That, that's one of my things, like, I don't know. Yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah, it could, it would, the pla- the master plan is all, um, it's been approved. It's, it's, it can be changed, but we'd have to change it.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
You know, and do we want to do that or do we want to spend the money to put the park where it's supposed to be? And what are the pros and cons of doing that?
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely help getting, you know, uh, well, I did talk to the same company about their designs and they, they do do, they will come to your town, do a design, do all the proposals. Um, I know it's about seventy five hundred dollars.
For design fee.
For the design fee.
There might just be a reason why it's better to keep it where it's planned originally that I don't know about, you know, I don't know.
Need to get in the weeds.
Yeah, but this is beautiful and it's exciting and I love that it's modular. So thank you for all your work.
All right, thank you.
Ed, Chauncey, Alan, Josh, you guys have any questions or comments or?
No, thank you for your time. Well, thank you.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Okay, um.
What's next?
Yeah, where am I? Uh, okay. Changes to the town of Rhinebeck zoning laws relating to solar electrical power generation as a discussion item. Alan, that's you. And you're on mute.
I was really brilliant before I turned this.
I know, I know.
So, uh, current zoning laws for solar limit the size of the array to roughly under a hun- uh, million watts, a megawatt. And, uh, one of the problems with, uh, trying to deal with community solar, that is to say, an operation where, where residents of the town could buy into a solar array that's in a centralized place. One of the problems with it is that a megawatt is way too small for, to be viable because there's a lot of overhead in creating a solar park.
But Alan, what, that limit is based on what? Transmissibility or?
It was based on just square feet. Um, the, the problem is that in order to do a viable community solar program, you need at least five megawatts. It takes roughly twenty five acres to do that. The acreage coverage would be roughly twenty percent. If you take the setbacks away, the, the solar array might take up forty percent of the remaining area. But, uh, so in terms of the, the, the current zoning law, the density wouldn't be any, any different. It would just be bigger. In other words, we're allowing for, for, in effect, a five acre, one megawatt, uh, program. And what this, what, what, what I'm going to be proposing is to increase that by a factor of five so that we can have a viable capability, a financially viable, uh, program. One of the problems, just so you'll know, is trying to get access to the grid. And in town, there are relatively few places where you can get access that's adequate to the, to, to the, uh, power that's needed. You just can't hook up anywhere. So then, and, and hooking up is expensive as well. So there's a lot of fixed costs when you do community solar. And as I said, the five megawatts is about the minimum that would be viable, given all the fixed costs.
So I know that, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to look at this was because our whole, um, plan for, um, community choice aggregate sort of became untenable when the rates shot up. Um, and we didn't want to commit any of our residents to spending more money. And we are committed to, you know, reducing our, our reliance on fossil fuel here. And, you know, New York State is pushing us towards that and I'm happy for that. So this would allow us to generate more community solar power in Rhinebeck. So this would allow us to generate more community solar power in Rhinebeck. And you you believe, you know, when we originally did this law, we were cognizant, we wanted I guess, micro um grids because we we didn't want a big solar covering things. We got a lot of pushback from neighbors who didn't want it in their backyard. We had a lawsuit, as a matter of fact, uh even though it wouldn't be visible. But now this will give us a little bit more flexibility and how big they are and how they're sited. And do you believe we can still do something like this within the guidance, you know, the guidance of our our comprehensive plan of preserving our you know, landscape and and generate?
Yeah, all the rules about uh clearance and setbacks and visibility and and so on all still apply. All the, all this does is it increases the possible capacity so that the a developer would be more inclined to come along and propose something.
And we have a, uh I know we had a, just for the public, um I think it was Alan and I had a telephone call um several months ago with um Victor Narukai from uh um Hudson, I'm sorry, Central Hudson.
Yeah.
And we went over where all the points are in the town that we could fa- feed 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 solar back into the grid and um we had a consultant help us with that. Would he help us with this law, Dan?
You're asking?
Yeah.
Who are you, you're asking me?
Yeah, yeah, you.
I thought you said Dan.
No, the consultant was Dan.
Okay, sorry, I was waiting, I was waiting for Dan to say something. Sure, yeah, we, I I I think actually, if we if we pass, if we change the zoning laws, the next thing that should happen is we should, we should entertain developers who want to try to do it and let them, you know, let them figure out where.
Yeah, but we have to revise the zoning before we do that, yes?
Right, yes.
All right, so we should get our planner involved and?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, I think the, I think trying to figure out where to hook up is uh premature at this point.
No, I'm just saying, we have to be cognizant of that when we're writing the law because that's one of the, that's one of the big limitations of what we've done with our law.
Yeah, I mean, based on the little bit of looking that I did, there are a lot of sites that are not viable because they don't have access to the right capacity.
Right, that's what I, yeah. Um, thank you, Alan. Do you have anything else or?
Oh, I just want to say what the next step is, I'm gonna create some proposed changes to the zoning law. I'll work with Jim and Warren and and then bring it back to the town board.
Terrific, thank you. Uh Josh or Chauncey or Ed, do you have any questions or comments?
I was wondering, how much acreage did you say it's needed for five megawatts?
For five um, five megawatts takes twenty-five acres.
Okay, we.
And uh and the panel area to the ground area is less than twenty percent. So there's, so that twenty-five acres includes setbacks, includes, you know, space between the the rows of the array, so you can get a mower in there, includes uh, you know, the transformers and and so on, so.
Aren't we gonna have, aren't we gonna have sheep and goats in there instead of mower?
Sure, why not?
Thanks for doing this. I know we we said we wanted to do this in light of our community choice aggregate going bottoms up. It's just, um, so.
Yeah, hopefully this will attract some proposals.
Is it, is it fair to infer from this discussion that there's at least a possibility of financial feasibility with regard to the cost of getting power to the grid, because when Ed and I were looking at something along these lines several years ago, the talk were just like a million dollars, was it a million or three million?
Put new infrastructure and to feed into the grid.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's why we're doing this, so that we could allow um bigger arrays to be sited where natural, where they can naturally already tie in.
But but it, but beyond that, at some point, there's a pricing, it makes sense if you have a twenty-five acre lot that you can have, you can put the pipe from one point to the other, and that was the other point of it. There's a price viability related to the new farm to actually put the line to the, to the um substation.
Right, like we looked at our old landfill and there's no infrastructure there, so we couldn't feed anything into a grid, so it became untenable. So yes, to your point, Chauncey, yep, yes, that's valid.
Well, I mean, what what this does is it creates the possibility. And we'll see what the practical part of it is once uh we open up the possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Uh anything else? Okay, I'm gonna go on to my resolutions. Um, I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-one one eighty-seven for the option of surplus highway equipment.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
I can't.
Is that Ed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-one one eighty-eight for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, uh forty-five checks totaling thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Uh are there any questions or any comments? All in favor? I, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-one one eighty-nine, temporary closing town hall to the public on Fridays.
Motion.
Thank you, Josh. May I have a second? Thank you. Are there any um questions or comments? All in favor?
I.
I, any opposed? So moved. Um the last item tonight uh is a resolution authorizing the town supervisor to execute uh a restated amendment agreement with Rugie's Village Holdings LLC at all. This did not make our agenda. Uh we redid our agenda and put it on and um is this something we're ready to bring to the floor? May I have a motion?
Yes, don't move.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Um is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Great, uh thank you. Are there any new um any new business before the town board? Is there any public comment on any non-agenda item? Anything that anyone from the town board would like to bring up or say? Oh, oh, geez, I'm glad I took a long time because I I wanted to bring up our, our um me, our budget schedule, so uh let me just pull this up. Um twenty twenty-two budget schedule, I have to have my tentative budget to the clerk by uh Thursday, September thirtieth. But I am going to aim to do that on Monday, the twenty-seventh, which is a regularly town board uh scheduled meeting. Um if I don't do it, then I will at that meeting reschedule uh reschedule this um, give it to the clerk on September thirtieth and reschedule a special town board meeting on October fifth. So please hold October fifth for a special town board meeting and we could do it on any day because I think the only item would be the laying down of 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 the budgets. If I don't have it to you by the twenty-seventh, which I am aiming to do. I would like to schedule uh one, two, three, four, five, six workshops in October on Tuesday, October fifth, Thursday, October seventh, Tuesday, October twelfth, Thursday, October fourteenth, Tuesday, October nineteenth, and Thursday, October twenty-first. Is everybody able to hold uh say uh one to one P M on those days?
Run through the dates one more time, would you please?
Yes, the fifth, the seventh, the twelfth, the fourteenth, the nineteenth, and the twenty-first.
Fifth, seventh, twelfth, nineteenth.
Fourteen, nineteen, and twenty-one.
Yeah, so every.
And twenty-one.
I don't anticipate meeting six budget meetings, but I wanted to notice the public now and get them in your schedule for one P M. Does that work?
Yeah, it would, you have any idea how long they'll last?
No, no, it's it's kind of up to you guys.
I know.
Because it becomes your your budget, but I'll I'll try, we've done well in the past. And, you know, we have, we're gonna commit a lot of money to capital projects this year, so hopefully it'll be tight enough before.
And we would plan all of those meetings to be at one o'clock.
I think so, yes. Is that where everybody? Uh and the reason being is that's when our staff is in town hall and Shelley, our bookkeeper. Um great, so Joni, you can publicly, this is a public notice of those meetings.
We're gonna do them in person?
No, no, we will do it via Zoom. We will do it via live broadcast on on Zoom. Um and then we have to adopt the budget by uh, I don't know, uh October thirteenth or fifteenth. I think I'd like to adopt it on Monday, October twenty-fifth. But if we're not ready for that, I will at that regular town board meeting, uh we're we're gonna get tentatively schedule our public hearing for Monday, October twenty-fifth with a possible adoption. And if we need a backup day, we will adopt it uh on Monday, November eighth.
Okay.
All right, sound good?
Okay, she has something regarding tennis courts area or?
No, I I I don't have it assembled and I, I don't.
All right.
Great. Um, any other discussion?
Yeah, I don't, let me just have a sentence. I uh sent an email to everybody right at the beginning of the meeting about the live streaming protocols for these meetings. I would appreciate your taking a look at them, uh and if you have any comments, get back to me.
Um why, that's how we've been doing it. Why wouldn't we continue to do it like that?
Because it's, because it's redundant and it's, and it takes a lot of effort to do.
And why have we been doing it?
Government.
Well, shouldn't we be redundant?
No. It's, it's, it's unnecessary. I mean, first of all, we don't think anybody's using it. So, all right, okay, let me explain. There are two ways to.
You you explained it, I think, in your letter.
Yeah. Public, if anybody.
Will you, will you please call um Laurie Mithin at the Association of Towns and ask her? She's counsel there.
Laurie Mithin.
Yeah, she has a hyphenated last name because she's married, but she may be able to steer steer you towards um somebody in uh the Department of State.
So I won't have to bother Warren, okay.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Yes, it would it would make life substantially simpler if we could get rid of the second way.
Yeah, I just don't want to limit the public's access, that's the only thing. Um, okay, um, any other business before the board? Okay, hearing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thanks. Good night, everybody.